Hey, welcome everyone to this special edition of the State of Greater Western New York Report. We've got our fourth town hall meeting, virtual town hall meeting, coming up in a moment. And as always, our shows are brought to you by.
Each week, our community makes history. Each week, you make history. And each week, there's only one source to turn to for the first take on history. You know what that is? Subscribe to the Sentinel right now to discover the history being made in your own backyard. We're Ben and Holly Falls, Lima Sentinel, more than just your news, it's your history. Welcome everyone to this edition of the State of Greater Western New York Report. Join us each episode as we discuss fantastic topics ranging from history to science to the strange and the wonderful, as well as the treasured spirit with which our region has infused America. We challenge you to consider all things Greater Western New York, from our region's very beginnings to how it inspires, how it empowers, and why it is so admirable. Here's the host of the State of Greater Western New York Report, Chris Carosa.
All right, all right, we are starting finally over here. And thank you for your patience. We're getting the audio all straightened up. We've got a really special town hall meeting today. It is really focused on an issue that has come to fore recently involving school board autonomy. We have three new school board members who have been just elected this past spring. They're really on top of the issues that are facing school boards. And really, it's not so much the fault of the local school boards, but it is issues that are coming down from on high. And that helped propelled at least some of the people, not just the ones here, but others into their newly elected school board positions. We're going to do this as we've traditionally done with our town hall meetings. We're going to start with about a half hour of keynote presentations from our guests. Then we're going to go into a half hour panel discussion, followed by a half hour Zoom meeting where all of you will be able to talk. The first hour will be recorded and will be replayed both tomorrow at noon, as well as on Sunday, our regular rebroadcast dates. So let's just get started off right off the bat here with Mark Kless. Mark is newly elected in the Pioneer Central School District. So Mark, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself? How you got to where you are and maybe your first impressions of everything?
Sure, well, for everybody out there, my name is Mark Kless and I am a newly elected board member for the Pioneer Central School District. Um, I am quite quickly the father of four children. Two of them are still in public school, one in the middle school, one just entering the high school. And I am married to my wife for 23 years. She has spent 30 years in public education as currently an administrator in the, uh, in the public school systems. Um, so what got me interested in running for school board? Okay, well, to be quite frank about that, I was never really interested in running for school board. Um, this was actually something that happened because it needed to happen. And that would be because of the restrictions with COVID. Um, I was watching as the students in our district were suffering. They had shut down our schools, our kids were being, um, were being shut out from their education. The, the lower achievers were falling further and further behind. While I watched other families that had intellectual childrens from intellectual families, who had no problem at all with, uh, with doing online learning. Um, and meanwhile, when all this was happening, uh, we all knew that the, um, COVID-19 has very little to no effect on children. So, um, obviously I'd mean major, major concerns about that. So I started voicing my concerns as a citizen. Um, and I am a business owner in the area. We used a couple of tools in our disposal, including a billboard, to, um, to ask that we unmask our children. And, um, I also started speaking about some of the other issues happening in our, in our district with, uh, limiting the amount of speak time, um, at public school board meetings for our parents and our citizens and also, um, that we had, uh, kind of taught our, talked about our parents almost, we treated them in contempt and then in some ways, um, and it felt like we were being silenced. We had moved all our board meetings to Zoom. We weren't allowed to meet in public. And I voiced my opinion about this and, um, it was kind of a put up or shut up kind of thing. So that's when I decided to run for school board. Um, I was worried about the transparency that our school board had. Um, as far as the reception from the voters in our area, uh, I was very well received in our area. We live in a very rural school district. We have 250 square miles of school district. And, um, we had about 1,500 voters show up and approximately almost 1,000 casted their vote in my direction. And the overall reaction from the community towards me was very, very, very positive. Um, there was some negative, obviously you're going to get that, but overall it was very positive. People were very happy that I would run. Um, thoughts about the board now that I've been on for a little while? Well, to start with that, our board is, uh, in the middle of some turbulent times right now with our school district. Both our superintendent and our, uh, high school principal are both, uh, been removed. And we are now in the middle of all that. So it's been a very turbulent time to join a school board. My overall thoughts would be I would like to hear more opinions from people. I'd like the dialogue to be open a little bit more. Um, I'd like people to stand up for what they believe in a little bit more. And I think people are aligned with what we're thinking. I just think they, uh, they need to stand up a little bit for what they're thinking about. And, uh, and that would be my intro.
All right. Thank you very much there, Mark. Next, we're going to go with Jim and Jim, I'm going to give you the benefit of a countdown clock here, just to keep your pace in yourself if you can see that. If not, I'll, uh, since I don't know if you can see, I'll just, uh, come upon you when you hit your seven minute mark. So Jim, go ahead and take it away.
Okay, um, my name is, uh, Jim Michael. I live in the town of Wales, I'm in the Iroquois district. I have, uh, two kids in school, uh, one's going to be a senior, uh, one's going to be a sophomore this coming year. Uh, the Iroquois district is, uh, the district has composed primarily the towns of Elmo, Marilla, Wales, you know, a little bit of Lancaster, Eastmore and Alden, depending on where it falls. Um, and I've lived in the community for about 22 years. I've been married for about 22 years. The generally, the reason why, um, I decided to run for school board is, uh, I believe that you have to be part of the process and you have to contribute. Um, and I believe that the, uh, governance or the consent to govern comes from the, from the government, from, from the people. Um, and I believe that it's got to be largely a very much a two-way, um, communication. I, I believe it's important that, you know, that we are there, open to listen to and discuss and talk, you know, to the people that we represent because it is our function to represent them, to represent their views. And I feel it's equally, I'm as important that, that those people communicate, you know, back with us. So I mean, events like this, you know, I definitely want to thank everyone. I want to thank Chris and, uh, Greater Western New York, all the people on it. Because in order for, you know, a republic to work or any sort of representative democracy, it takes that two-way communication. It's vital that we hear back from all the people in the community on what, what they're thinking. Um, more specifically, um, I, I believe that our schools, I mean, they are the factories of the future. They're going to produce the, the next leaders, the next doctors, the next lawyers, the next farmers, the next nurses. And that's a critical, a critical, um, investment in their future and all of our futures. Um, and I just don't, can't believe that can't be overstated enough. Um, and within the schools, if the largest source of, you know, our taxes, uh, local taxes come from the schools. So I, I believe, believe they're vital. Um, I believe that, you know, that schools, you know, it, it, you know, my opinion, they should definitely, you know, educate the students, you know, math, science, uh, reading, English. I, I believe that, you know, that, that sports and extracurricular activities are essential, um, to the development of, you know, a healthy future. And, and, and the environment should be, you know, a very stable, safe emotional environment. I think it's extremely important that we, that, that kids and students are taught how to think, how to critically think. I don't think they should ever be told what to think or what to believe. Um, I think that, you know, discussion and debate on current issues is extremely important as long as they're done, um, free of, you know, adult, interjecting adult opinions. Cause it's, it's important they learn what they believe, why they believe and support that. I, I, I don't think it should be challenging. I don't think it should just be, you know, we're telling them what to do. Um, also, you know, like I said, I believe in respectful use of the resources that the community gives to us, um, that the students, the parents and, and the community are, it may not be the perfect word, words, but they're, they're customers of the, uh, the district and we are, you know, responsible and accountable to them to meet that, uh, that goal, um, and that objective. My experience with running for school board was a really great experience. I, I enjoyed it. I enjoyed talking to people, you know, trying to understand why they felt. Obviously people who agree with you is, you know, it's, it's easy, it's simple, but it's hearing the people that you disagree from. Having a communication and, and understanding where they're coming from and trying to get off to the same place. Um, and I, and I really do, I, I look forward to working with the fellow board members, administration and community. Um, that's kind of my, uh, nutshell.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Wow. You guys are great. You know, you gotta, you're each leaving a couple of minutes on the board there. So let's move on to Mark Bornagario, who's not there. He's not up there yet. That's still Jim. So we'll bring him on, Mark. Mark, uh, why don't you tell us a little bit about where you're from? Well, we know you're from Greece. Uh, tell us a little bit about how you got on board and what the initial thoughts were.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Yeah. So my name is Mark Bornagario. Uh, I am a husband and, uh, father of three sons, all of whom, uh, started out in, uh, private Christian education and then transferred to, uh, public high school. Uh, and they are now complete with high school and almost all three of them through college. So my kids are done with it. Uh, my wife is involved in education. One of my sons just this, the spring graduated, uh, from college, uh, as a teacher. So, you know, the education, uh, it's important to us. And, uh, that's underlying one of the reasons that I decided to run for school board. But there was a more imminent issue that, uh, that took place, uh, about a year and a half ago, a family member was carjacked, uh, held at gunpoint and police were called, uh, a significant event for me. Uh, and shortly thereafter, uh, we were, we became aware of an incident at one of our, uh, one of our middle schools in Greece, which is a large suburb of Rochester. Uh, the, the incident involved a, uh, security guard placing a blue line flag in a window. And, uh, security guard just wanted to show her support for police. This was, uh, this was during 2020 and, uh, so I guess about two years ago, a lot, uh, a lot was going on. Uh, negative attitudes towards the police. Well, the principal required the flag to be removed. Uh, that became an event on, on Facebook as, as word got around. Uh, happened to see that and someone on the, uh, in the, in the comments said, we need to talk to the school board. Said, you're right, I'll be there. Uh, about four of us showed up and expressed our displeasure with that, uh, with that fact. And, uh, a lot of things transpired. Uh, by the way, I, I will, uh, I will just add that, uh, the reason the, the flag was to be removed because was, because the, um, the administration or the, or the leadership at the school said that, uh, it was a racist symbol, uh, and, uh, that, uh, it was, it was controversial. At the same time, there was a lot of, uh, other anti-police, uh, propaganda all over, all over the school, all over the walls. The, uh, flag happened to be owned and, and placed there by a, a woman, security guard who was also black. So she specifically was called a white supremacist. This, this environment started to become very evident as I and people who have since become, uh, pretty good friends of mine, uh, became involved. We started attending school board meetings regularly and, uh, and addressing school board, expressing our displeasure over the fact that our school communities were just being intentionally divided. We're making distinctions between kids, races, genders, whatever. And rather than pulling our schools together and, uh, being a community, we were just creating a lot of animus. So we, we kept pressing that issue and started asking for information regarding that they were, they were planning an anti-racism pilot program. They never did give us the, uh, any information on that program. They, they held a forum for us, but they sidestepped that issue completely and gave us a lesson on the, uh, Irish potato famine. Uh, I guess they just didn't want to show what was, what they might have originally been planning. Uh, that kind of sealed in, in our minds that we needed, we needed to run, someone needed to run for school board. Three of us who were involved in, in those issues at the time decided, like with, uh, with the other guys here, uh, someone had to do it and, uh, and we had to step up and do it. Uh, we found that there was a lot of support for us. We were told by a friendly member of the school board that probably wouldn't win. We were running against three incumbents, uh, and, uh, two of us ended up winning. We happened to have, uh, uh, well, the third, the third, uh, the incumbent won, she came in third. So two of us placed first and second, and the third of us placed a close four. So we did pretty well. We got a lot of support from teachers who, to use a phrase of one, uh, we said, things are out of control and we need change. Uh, issues of violence were, were prominent, uh, fights, multiple fights every day in schools. Uh, code of conduct not being enforced, that remains very, uh, very important issue, uh, for our community, for parents. Uh, students who were afraid to use the bathrooms because of what they might encounter in there. Uh, in the process of all of this, other issues like the ending of comprehensive sexuality education, uh, promoted by one of the local state senators, uh, began to get attention. And so we, we just kept pressing all of those issues. And, uh, in, in the meantime, it was COVID, uh, the masking and the, uh, uh, the remote learning was a disaster. Uh, that seriously impaired, uh, students' ability to learn, teachers' ability to teach. And, uh, uh, it, it, it was an emotionally bad environment. So, uh, someone needed to step in. We decided to do it. We've been involved now in three board meetings. I have to say, the board members, those who were on the board before we ran and, uh, and those who are there now, were all really decent people. We have a very good, uh, working relationship. We don't agree on everything, but we respectful to each other. That's been a really good setting. Even during that campaign, there was no negative campaigning from either side. It was just a focus on the issues. Uh, there were, were a few people who threw out some negative, uh, comments against us. But all in all, it was a great experience. Loved interacting with, uh, with voters on, on the streets and, you know, knocking on doors. It was great.
All right. Thank you very much, Mark. And, uh, let's go back to our normal view here. We want to remind everybody that you're watching the State of Greater Western New York Virtual Town Hall Meeting. You may be watching this on replay, but there is a live, uh, attendance here and they will have an opportunity to ask questions. Uh, in a moment, we are going to be breaking up into a panel. If you'd like to ask a question during the live portion now, then please go to the chat and put your question there. You know, feel free, it, it should stay sort of like on topic. But if it's, if it involves a school district that isn't one of the three that are here, understand that our guests might not know the specifics of any particular school district. But so try to keep your questions probably more general, uh, than local. And let's see here, we're going to have to rearrange the chairs here to get ready for the panel. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to play a brief commercial and then we're going to come right back and we're going to have our panel discussion. Stay tuned, folks.
Through the mists of time, nature and man have both created and buried treasures beyond the imagination. With the ages, these riches slowly dissolve into mere myths until they are forever forgotten. But there are those brave souls who tirelessly cling to the truth, ever seeking to discover the undiscovered, to reveal what has always been there, to uncover the hidden gems of a land thought forsaken but loved by millions. Fifty Hidden Gems of Greater Western New York. Discover the secrets in your own backyard. Buy your copy now at fiftyhiddengems.com.
All right. So let's start with our panel. You like that switch, folks? We hear the little thingy here. All right. So we're going to just start off talking in general about what was going on in terms of the school board. But, but before we start, Mark B., and I'm going to go Mark K. and Mark B. So Mark B. told us a little bit about the dynamics of his election. Mark K. and, and Jim, can you tell that you had a little bit of a different dynamic in the sense where you didn't have multiple people or you didn't have multiple board positions available? I think that's right for both of you. And so, so Mark Klass, can you start by telling us what was going on in terms of the number of seats that were available in your board? How many people ran and maybe what the turnout was?
Sure. So we had one seat available and I was running, um, against the incumbent. The incumbent had been in there for 15 years. Um, she was a good woman and she still is, um, very well received by the community. Um, her values and her ideas were different from mine, but she was a, a very good person. Um, the community was fed up with what was going on with COVID, what was going on with gender identity, things that are going on and basically coming down from Albany more than anything. Not necessarily things that are being pushed by, um, our school administration or our school board, but, but the things that were coming down from Albany, um, were really, really high on the priority of our community and the, and, and our constituents. And so, um, they, they identified with myself. Um, so normally we're a small rural school district, might have about 300 people show up for an election. We had about 1,500 this time around. Um, we brought quite a few people with us. Uh, there was, there was line for the entire day for voting. Um, and, uh, and, and it probably was the largest turnout, one of the largest turnouts ever, um, in, in our, in our, in the history of our school, which speaks volumes for what's going on in the community. Um, the community's not happy. When they're not happy, they show up, right? So, uh, and, and, and that was in a nutshell.
All right. Thanks, Mark. So Jim, how about you? How many seats were open and, and how many people ran for them?
Um, uh, uh, our, uh, in this election, there was one seat open. Um, the previous, uh, incumbent, uh, decided, uh, not to run. So it was me and another gentleman who ran. Um, it was not a, you know, controversial election, um, you know, by, uh, any means. Um, people and so about 1,100 people showed, I'm rounding, but 1,100 people showed up to vote. Uh, I believe I won about, about 140 votes. That's a pretty, 1,100 is a pretty standard, uh, number, uh, for, for our, our district. And it, most people in our district were generally just concerned about a lot of the general things. Just education, estate facilities, um, budget, taxes. Um, ours, you know, it was not really, it was, it was exciting time and very enjoyable and a lot of good conversations with people, groups, PTOs. But there wasn't like some of the other, um, gentlemen, there wasn't really hot, uh, button, you know, big outcry from the community, uh, that people in Iroquois, you know, are very supportive of the school. Um, and there's, you know, generally a good relation there.
Is it possible, Jim, that, uh, maybe within your school board, there's generally more agreement on some of these issues unlike it sounds like from maybe the other two guys? Is that true?
Um, like I, speaking for, for myself, um, and you know, obviously being there, um, you know, not for tons and tons of meetings, it definitely seems like a outstanding group of people that are definitely willing to listen and, you know, the goal is to get the best, uh, possible outcome. Uh, yeah, so I would generally agree with that statement. Yes.
So Mark B. in Greece, what has been the reception from your board? You said you worked together, but there's some disagreement on some issues. That's always going to be the case, but I'm more curious to see if there is more agreement. And in what, in what areas do you guys align, uh, despite maybe whatever differences you might have in others?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to finding out as well. I will tell you that in, in the process of preparing to run or not get, or even before that, we had a lot of private conversations with both members of the administration and numerous school board members, uh, prior to the election. And, uh, people who, with, one of them even described herself as, uh, more the most left-leaning member of the school board. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to say we've become, I'll say, really good friends. Uh, there is a lot, uh, common ground between us. And I think that's true with, uh, most of the other, uh, board members as well. I, I know there's a lot of common ground. Uh, we, you know, what the specific policy, uh, decisions are, is, is where a lot of this will play out. But as I think everyone has been saying so far, a lot of the issues have been forced on us from Albany. Uh, and, you know, I think much of it is driven by the fact that most school board or most school districts accept state aid and it comes with strings attached. And in the process, we lose our autonomy. One of our main arguments in our campaign, we had, I think, five, one of them was local control. The, the issues were being taken away from us, being directed by the governor and his agencies, her agencies. And we want it back.
This is an issue that pops up a lot, the fact that there are these strings attached to the state aid. How realistic is it to wean yourself out of, out of that state aid? Or is it that just, is there another way to do it that's maybe longer term, but, but would end up being more successful?
Uh, I think it will be difficult. I think there is, uh, almost an addiction to it. Um, I don't know that, uh, that we can't get away from some of it. I think a lot of, of our districts have become, uh, very administration. I don't want to say heavy, but a lot more administration involved. We want to focus, uh, on teachers and students and give them the support that they need. I think we've proved historically that you can do, uh, an awful lot by good education without having to have more and more millions of, uh, controlling dollars.
So, so how many students are there? And let's get a sense of size of the three school districts here. How many students are there in Greece?
I'd say it's about 15,000.
Okay. And in Iroquois Central, Jim?
Um, I mean, I haven't seen the current, current beds count, but to give you an idea, we are definitely smaller than Greece. Uh, we're probably right around the last number I saw for the beds count was probably around like 25, 2600.
Okay. And then how about Pioneer, Mark?
Pioneer, we're, we're at about 2,000 students.
Yeah. So, okay. So both of you guys have much smaller districts. Again, the same question is, how realistic is? Again, the same question is, how realistic is it to wean yourself off of that state aid? Is it? And I guess sort of what I'm getting at is maybe it's easier for a smaller district? That's my thought. What are your thoughts on that? Go ahead, Jim, you start.
Um, I feel that the way the system is set up right now, that that would be extremely difficult. And and I think that kind of when I started off. It's getting people involved and advocating to make the changes at the state level. Like a lot of the, the gentleman said, a lot of the policies, you know, come down from the state. And the only way to change that is to start coming together, advocating for those changes to be made in Albany. So yeah, so I don't feel if nothing, as I say, if nothing changes, nothing changes. So I think the big thing is is school board members and what I like to do myself is talk to the community and and let them know that. They have to start, you know, communicating with representatives in Albany and advocating for some of these changes.
So so Mark, class, wow, man, you guys should have had different names. Are you? Are you of the same opinion with regards to the feasibility of getting off of state aid? And if so. My guess is based on, no, you're not. Okay, go ahead.
We're on the dole. We're on the dole. There's there's no way, or no, there's no way we're getting off. I mean, we we have. We have a sixty-two million dollar budget in our school district and forty-some, five million of it is is just wages. I mean, there's there's no way that our local, our local area could carry those wages. I think maybe like twenty million dollars right now, probably even a little less is coming from our local taxpayers. And so, I mean, we 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 would all, just just to keep the employees we have right now, even if we cut. Even if we could figure out a way to cut ten, twenty percent of them, we still wouldn't even come close. The other thing is that there's there's, these are mandates, these are mandates coming from the state. We we can't just willy nilly say, hey, we're not gonna do this anymore. We're so indebted to the state, we're we're basically, there's there's no way around it, to be honest with you. The the issue I have is they they send crap down from Albany, they send it to us. They shove it in our face, they tell us what we have to do, and we don't say anything in return, we just accept it. I mean, at least we have to stand up and say, we don't like it. And and that's not happening right now. Basically, we're just trying to shut in our mouth and they're telling us what to do. And you talk about autonomy. How are you gonna have autonomy ever if you don't even stand up for yourself, which we won't?
Well, let's let's start, let's assume that you stand up for yourself. Who are you talking to? Who are you gonna shout back to?
Well, you know, that's, there's so many layers. In this, in this, in this public education system, I mean, we have our local board and our administrators. And then there's OSIs, and then there's NISBIT, and then there's the Board of Regents and the Department of Education. Just to hear our voice is next to impossible. That's one of the issues with public schools right now. So we have a superintendent and we yell at our superintendent, we say, unask our kids. Now, where does it go from there? First of all, if your superintendent doesn't agree with what you're saying, chances are it doesn't go very far at all. Then he takes it to the superintendent, the superintendents, and chances are that guy doesn't agree with you. And so he dials it back a little bit. If it ever makes it to Albany, chances are it's been dialed back to the point where nobody's even listening to you, which means you just gotta get louder, really.
Well, let's let's look at an example. At our last town board meeting, one of our guests was actually a member of the school district, Lugoni School District in Livingston County. And what he told us was that all the school districts in Livingston County got together and signed a letter and sent it to the governor's office about health issues, mask mandates, and everything. So so there's an example of all the all the school districts in a particular county. Gathering together and in essence shouting back to Albany. Is that something that could be used as a role model? It with either within individual counties or among several counties? Is it realistic to expect that the schools could sort of come together in a common voice? Have they ever done anything like that before, similar to what Livingston County has done? Who wants to try to go with this one?
First of all, if if Livingston County did that. No one heard about it. Because, I mean, we have our finger on the pulse around here and I didn't hear about it. And 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 so that it was silenced somewhere along the way, you know?
Well, I'm not sure it was, it wouldn't be on Livingston County. To be honest, they didn't talk to any school districts outside of Livingston County. In fact. The one school district our paper covers straddles Monroe and Livingston County. And that school district, technically it's headquartered in Monroe County, wasn't even approached on it. So it could be, I mean, that's an issue that maybe we bring up for Livingston County schools to see. Why didn't they go out beyond Livingston County? But again, whatever they did or how they did it, going forward. How would school districts come together? To talk about either specific issues or general issues? What's the process? What's the structure of school districts within the Western New York region that would allow them to do that?
Just I'll jump in there. In in Monroe County, the Rochester area, there is a Monroe County School District Association. And that is very involved. There is a lot of concerted efforts among the school districts, a lot of which I'm, I regret to change. I can tell you that the the county association, as well as the most members of our district are advocates of going Albany and getting more money. They want it. So I don't think there's right now an effort to to get away from it, certainly not by joining forces, but maybe to eliminate some of the mandates, getting cutting some of the strings. Maybe we could turn our our focus on that, but there there is the mechanism for bringing the school districts together. And in fact, they have taken some united actions, sending out a joint letter regarding some of the folk issues that have come up. And have taken a joint stand together. So it can be done.
Jim, you mentioned about, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, coming from this in a little bit of a different direction, and then I'll definitely the question you were about to ask is what what people in state governments are even probably gonna pay attention to is numbers. So there was a story that, which is not, none to do with school districts in New York, but in Los Angeles County in California. They were going to reinstitute the mask mandates and it was gonna happen. Well, basically, the people in that area, the vast majority of them were done. This was this week. They weren't gonna do it. They in mass, they told the representatives that we're not doing this, you're not doing this. And and suddenly it was dropped. So what I think we have to do in in any sort of leadership position is engage, inform, and and get, you know, it's just numbers. You have to get, you know, mass amount of people or a large amount of people to contact their representatives, and that's what they pay attention to. I mean, I I don't, I'm sure a lot of people on this call have sent different representatives and different levels of government emails and 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 letters, and I don't know if that really gets it done. At one point, I sent a a senator a letter, basically very respectfully saying how much I disagree with him and why. And I got back a very nice formal saying, thank you for my support and asking for donation. I I just think you you have to get people behind you and let people know what's going on in society. And I I get it, you know, I got my kids are involved in sports, I'm working, my wife's working. We are all really busy and it's easy not to pay attention to everything. And I think it's our responsibility to make sure that our consent is really given to our leaders. And I think that's where it starts.
So that's sort of what I was gonna ask you, Jim, is you, if you complain or if you bring it to the attention of your local state representatives. To what extent are they in agreement with you? And you just gave an example where they weren't. But let's let's bring up the example where they are in agreement with you. And Mark, you could feel free to chime in too, if you have thoughts on this. But if they are in agreement with you. To what extent do they really have any power to do anything? Because it is all about the votes, it's about the population, and quite frankly, we just don't have the numbers to kind of get whatever we think is right. Mark, you wanna take that or?
Well, when it comes to if we're gonna stay on mask mandates and stuff like that, which is probably one of the biggest concerns that happened in the last, you know, couple of years with our, stuff like that, I think most of our state representatives in my area and rural area. They they were, they were on board with us and they were going back to their their senate meetings and they're going back to Albany. And 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 they're they're saying what we want to say, but they're they're being, they're they're being outnumbered. They don't even have a chance. And then and then we watch the bureaucratic agencies, we watch the health departments and the Department of Education. We start, we watch them go and work their work around and and make all their laws through a different process that basically we're almost eliminated from. So it it seems like, it seems like we're we're fighting a battle that we almost can't win, but we could win it if we get louder. And that's 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 my opinion, the silent majority, the people that are that are fed up with it, the people that he's talking about that are in like LA County that said, we're not doing this anymore, we're done. I mean, that's really where we're at now. I mean, it's at the point now where if they, if they bring some things down the pipe at some point or another, we're just going to have to stand out in front of the building and saying, we're not going in, or we're gonna stand out here with our children. We're gonna be in your parking lot, we're gonna jam up the whole place, but we're not walking in here. Call the police. You know? And 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 maybe then they'll start listening to us. But but I don't know if state representatives are gonna help us in that in that regard. Matter of fact. I know I know your state representative quite well down there in Elmo. And and I know he's aligned with us, but but he's he's beating his head against the wall here.
Yeah, my my mine was a was a was one of the, it was a federal senator, it was another issue away from okay. I was making the point that letters by themselves. Yeah, that could be it. But I was making a point that I don't, letters by themselves don't do it. It's a combination of what you were saying, you know, being loud, standing up and getting involved is what it will ultimately ultimately take.
So what about the potential for competition? For schools? And this is, this is kind of coming out of left field. Maybe right field would be a better way of saying it. You know, homeschools, charter schools, things like that, which you would think would begin to be self sustaining at one point. Could they really represent some sort of competition and would that actually end up hurting? The effort to to say restructure the public schools? Greece is probably the biggest place, so they they might have the the best potential for these sort of alternative schooling. So so Mark B, why don't you take that?
Sure. Well, yeah, I think I think they do have that potential and I think it's already happening. We've seen, I think it was a tripling in the number of homeschool students in the past couple of years. And and by the way, that speak yet even more loudly than people standing and protesting outside the doors. Because when those students leave, dollars please. School districts don't like that. Charter schools, there's there's a charter school in the city of Rochester that I am proud by. It's it's a really unique school. And one of my goals in the next couple of months is to convince some of my fellow board members to take a tour with me. I think there are a lot of, a lot of reasons to to really focus on and making our systems competitive and giving parents more choice. So yeah, I think I think that's an important tool.
What about homeschooling? Supposedly there was an increase of in homeschoolers during this whole COVID thing because parents just said, well, I'm here, the kid's here, let's just do it out of the home, I don't have to worry about anything else. Did, have you seen that? Let's, Mark B, Mark's, yeah, no, Markless, go ahead. You know, I'm looking for primarily a more of a rural district here where I would think it might be a little easier to do.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I've talked to a lot of parents that have that have actually pulled their kids out of public education and are homeschooling them. Some are using programs right now where they're noticing that their high school age son can, you know, go to school from gets up in the morning, seven, eight o'clock, does schooling till eleven o'clock noon. And then goes works with his father in the in the family business construction or something like that. It's working out a lot better for them. And and it all started from COVID. They, you know what? They shut down the schools, they kicked the kids, the kids out of the schools and the parents called BS on it. And they said, you know what? Let's let's find a better option. The problem we have, of course, is that we still have a lot of parents that have two parents that work in the family. To try and make it through the day to support their family, they both have to work. And it just doesn't give us an option to teach our kids at home. That's not an option for my family, it never will be. Plus, I love public education. I love the fact my children can go to school and interact with other kids and have the access to many of the different amenities that they have available for them. But but homeschooling is a sign, for sure. Albany's probably gonna ignore it, they're very good at ignoring all sorts of things, but the fact of the matter is when kids are dropping out of school and the parents are saying, we have a better option, it's called my living room. People should be listening. Because you you have all this stuff available, you got science wings and all this other stuff and 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 sports and gym programs and in amazing amenities and 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 these parents are saying, listen. We think we can do this better ourselves because we don't like you that much. And that should really be an eye opener for public schools and the Department of Education, although I'll be honest with you, I think they got their heads up their ass too much, they probably won't notice it, but but anyway.
Well, we had a.
Just to touch on one little more little thing there.
Go ahead.
Right now, the superintendents of our local schools are now being told that they have to go to our private schools and they have to inspect them, like our, like our, our Christian schools and and other options. And that's coming down the pipe in Albany to tell our superintendents to go and inspect the other schools that they really shouldn't have any authority over in any way, shape or form, you're talking about autonomy. And I think something that's gonna follow that will be home education. And I don't know if they'll be sending superintendents to people's homes to inspect the the programs that they're giving these kids. But I got a good feeling that they're sending somebody and they're probably coming soon.
Who's paying for it? Is that coming from the school district budget or the state giving them?
Well, right now, the school, the 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 Department of Education in New York State's flush with 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 actually printed money came from from a place called from the Federal Reserve. So I don't think anybody cares too much about where the money's coming from right now. It'll run out eventually, but right now, I don't think anybody cares. So.
One of the questions that we had from the attendees tonight asked, what percentage drop do you think would it take to get people to to sit up and take notice? So how much how much leakage of of this of the students has to occur before somebody takes notice?
I'll let somebody else take that.
I don't know, I mean, it's.
I don't know, but I I know they're already noticing that there's been a steady decline over over recent years, more than recent years.
And state aid is based on number of pupils, right?
It is. Now, in my, I I always use this in terms of my whole family, my son is now just graduated from college. From the time that he entered into the public education system as a pre-k kindergartner to now New York State has lost a half a million white students, half a million. And 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 I say that because that's what he is, right? That's what my kids are, they're white students. A half a million white students and their families have voted with their feet and decided to leave the public education system. And if they haven't woke up to that, what will they wake up to? Okay, so I I I I think they're so removed from reality in Albany and that that you could hit them upside the head with a million students gone and they'd probably still be pushing the same agendas.
Let me, let me ask you a different question and we'll let somebody other than Mark class answer it because he already.
Good idea.
Yeah, no, not because I don't want you to talk, but because you already, you're the reason why I thought of this question. So Mark brought up the point, Mark K brought up the point that parents, there are certain types of businesses or economic situations where parents are in that are conducive to having kids be schooled, school and work with the family business at the same time. And there are certain types of economic arrangements where that's not a good idea, where both parents are working the way Mark said. And there are certain types of economic arrangements where that's not a good idea, where both parents are working, the way Mark said. Is it possible to, how is it possible, I should say? To sort of encourage this former, the, the first one that I mentioned. Where you have parents working in an environment that is conducive to bringing their kids into. Is there a way that, that, that can be encouraged or, you know, facilitated in some way? And is it easier to do that in a rural area, Jim, like yours? Uh, or in a, in a more densely populated area like Gre- Greece for, for Mark B? Jim, why don't you start with this?
When you say bring it to the environment, you mean bring it to the environment of. Homeschooling or into the school environment?
Uh, I, I'm thinking more was homeschooling, right? Mark plus, that's what you were talking about? Where they would have the kids work at home or they would be at school at home for half a day and then half a day they'd. Go out and work with the family business somehow.
I mean, I guess, um, um, you know, sticking from myself, my thoughts on this, I, I, I think that those are, uh, you know. The one-offs or the cases that you would look at individually and you would, um, you know, talk to that family. Um, and, and then come to the, uh, you know, an arrangement that would make sense for them. I think on the fifty thousand foot view. Um, what my goal would be is to make, you know, in this case, my school district, um, to be the. The best it possibly can be and, 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 and have it continue to be a place as it is where, where kids wanna be. Students wanna be a- and, and the parents wanna to, uh, send them. But I would, you would have to maintain the flexi- flexibility, um, for those individual cases, you know? Depending on what those factors were for that family. I think you would, I would at least for myself wanna be open. To that and trying to make it work for them.
Right. So Mark B in Greece, it's just, is, is it just too big to think of something like this? You know, mo- mostly economic, mo- most of the job opportunities wouldn't be these small, say, parent-owned businesses. They would be more larger, I won't say manufacturing, but something akin to that.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that's really the, the key issue. Uh, Greece is. Fortunate enough to have a lot of business opportunities. Uh, I know from my circle, church circle, et cetera. Uh, a lot of families that do homeschool. So it's not necessarily an economic decision. Often it's a family decision. And I think that is probably the, the biggest factor. And it's, you know, it, it works much better if you've got, uh, at least one parent who is able to be at home. Um, sometimes families make sacrifices to do that. A big issue that we do have in Greece regarding families is, you know, so many broken families who've got a very diverse community. Economically, definitely, et cetera. A lot of kids from, uh, from open, broken homes and just trying to get parents engaged. Even, even, you know, with what's going on in the public schools can be a challenge. And I think that's one area that we're going to have to focus on. So, different issues. And can, can I just real quickly, Chris, throw in, uh, to, uh, uh. Our case earlier comment about, uh, you know, being really hard to change the people in Albany. I, I gotta tell you, Samra Brooks, Senator, State Senator Samra Brooke is the, um, main proponent of the apprehensive sexuality education. We, she held a number of town halls around the, around the community last year. She stopped showing up at them. Because there were so many people who were pushing back against her agenda. And I'm told from our, another local representative. That she doesn't even wanna talk about it anymore. And it's, it's probably not going to go anywhere. If, if it does, it'll be very watered down. So we could have a lot of influence.
Yeah, well, you mentioned that and I should add that in our next town hall meeting, which is scheduled for, uh, eight, uh, October, I should say. We want to bring the local state candidates to the town hall meeting, as many as we could, to have them talk about. Issues and answer questions that we have from people who attend the town hall meeting. So I don't know, maybe we will get somebody, uh, like you mentioned, or maybe, maybe it'll be a little bit more of a, of a stretch to get someone like that, but, uh. You know, that's, uh, that's gonna be our goal for October. So stay tuned for that. Uh, let's see, we're, we're just about at the end of our panel discussion. Does anybody have? Anything that they wanna add before we break and go to the town hall, to the open meeting part of this town hall?
Yep, I mean, and, and just, yeah, something I wanna add real quick, just to kind of piggyback on, on Mark. You know, one of the things that I've been involved in, a big proponent, you know, for a long time was, uh. And they, they use sports. Um, a- a- and during, um, you know, not, not that it's. It's relevant, this very second, but relevant in general, during the, you know, the time of COVID. In sports, there's, there was originally, you know, you, you, you can't, you can't do anything, you can't do anything, they can't do this, they can't do that. So, I mean, a bunch of us, you know, from across, you know, the state, I mean, a bunch of, of, of. Busher clubs, a bunch of organizations, um, and, you know, twenty thousand signatures on a petition, um, got together. We all put in money and filed, um, you know, a lawsuit. I mean, the law, the lawsuit was filed, um, and then probably within a couple of days. In, it never went anywhere. It, the, the state was like, okay, uh, you, you can do this, there's certain stuff you have to. Follow, but yeah, and they got all the seasons in. So to Mark's point, there are ways to bring enough support. To change, uh, the state, but it just, but once again, when you get, like, he said at the town hall with the. A state representative, if you get enough people, you know, advocating and pushing for something in the same direction. They, they can respond. It's just, how do you create those groups and sustain them and sustain the effort? So they're not just, I'm sort of hot, hot button issues.
Right. It's, it's gonna be a challenge for sure. Uh, so I think that what we'll do is. We're gonna, we're gonna break here and we're gonna thank everyone who has been watching this. As opposed to participating in a live version. If you've been watching this, let me go back to my original thing here. I remember every Thursday at noon, we do have a live show, State of Greater Western New York dot, or, uh, report. You can be a member of that live audience by going to stateof dot greaterwesternnewyork dot com. And each Thursday morning, we'll send you the link where you can be a member of the live audience. Now tomorrow we'll be showing a replay of this, so we won't be live. One of the rare times you're not live, uh, but you'll be, be able to see that. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna close it off for this portion of the show. Folks who are part of the town hall meeting live. And members of our panel here, just stay on the board as we go through the outro. Uh, and we'll just take it from there. So I wanna thank everybody for watching this show. And hope to see you again sometime soon.